Welcome to the board meeting, August 19th, 2021 business meeting. We have just, we opened the meeting and had an executive session, so we just exited the executive session, and so we're going to continue the meeting here. Can we all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the treasurer's report for June is available in the business office. We're gonna, we're gonna begin our reports, and I'm gonna, Dr. Doherty is going to do the first report, yes, on updates to policies on sexual harassment.
Good evening. Is it on? Okay, now it is, great. So really, I'm just here to talk about the September board meetings and what's coming up. So there were some changes that were made to Title IX, which is the sexual harassment policies. So in September, especially if we have our new student representatives by then, because it impacts students, and just getting their input on, on these new policies, you know, we read them twice, and there's not very many changes, but there are some slight changes that I would just like, you know, kids, students to be involved in and to be aware of. So, so those will be upcoming, you should receive them within the next week, just to review. So if you have any questions before our next board meeting about them, feel free to reach out, and we can go through them, okay? Thank you.
Okay, the superintendent's report?
Good evening, everyone. So I want to begin by, I know we've done this several times, but again, welcoming Jackie Levine, our new director of curriculum instruction, and David Cantrowitz, our new athletic director. Both have been here for a majority of the summer and are already off to an excellent start, and have become tremendous assets to our administrative team. Again, wanted to compliment our IB diploma candidates. Of the 16 students who are eligible, all 16 earned the criteria they needed to be received a diploma. That's a huge accomplishment for a school district, especially one our size, in its first year, and we're looking forward to many more students earning that diploma. Some of our summer activities, New Jersey orientation actually kicks off on Monday. So Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday next week, we welcome our new teachers. Professional development and curriculum writing is underway throughout the summer. Part of this work includes implementing a new writing program called the Writing Revolution. Our summer school extended year E&amp;L programs were a huge success, they actually just wrapped up, an opportunity for students to come in and continue their learning throughout the summer, enjoying fun and enriching activities. Our summer support and enrichment programs across all three buildings are concluding as well, the turnout was great, and the number of students came out, and some students hadn't been in the building in many, many months, so it served as a good reentry. Others were here for some support and enrichment across all subject areas. Always an exciting time for our incoming kindergarten class. We have our kinder camp, kindergarten bus run, and orientation all scheduled and coming up in the very near future. We look forward to welcoming those students, we're up to almost 100 incoming kindergartners. As has been discussed at many workshops, our diversity, equity, and inclusivity parent workshop is scheduled for next week, August 26th. We have 40 parents who signed up to participate in that work, and I'm looking forward to taking on that important task beside them. Just a quick public service announcement regarding the opening of schools, we have superintendent's conference days scheduled for August 31st and September 1st, Tuesday and Wednesday. Students return September 2nd and 3rd. The staggered start in some buildings, the elementary school will welcome back all students on September 2nd. In the middle school, 5th and 6th grade students will start as sort of a reorientation on September 2nd, and welcome all students on September 3rd. The high school, 9th and 10th graders on September 2nd, and 11th and 12th graders on September 3rd. Once we return from the Labor Day break, all students will then again be back full-time. We are returning to our normal arrival and dismissal schedules, unlike the shortened length of school day from last year. Then I wanted to provide an update from our reentry task force. Members of the district's reentry task force met this afternoon. This task force was comprised really early on in the pandemic, the spring, when, right after we closed down, and it consists of members, members consist of teachers, administrators, support staff, parents, community members, our town supervisor, first responders, our school physician, nurses, and public health officials. The meeting began with sort of a walk down memory lane, how we got to where we were, how excited we were at the end of June, thinking that we would not need to meet again, and how slightly depressing it was, the fact that we were now meeting again, to decide the best move forward. Really, it was an informational meeting, the intention was not to make any decisions at this time. Really, the consensus across the entire group was to wait and see what happens at the state level. I don't think it's any surprise to anyone, there's a lot of turnover at the state level, and it remains a bit of an unknown whether or not we receive guidance from New York State. Issuing our own guidance only to be superseded by state guidance wouldn't make any sense at this point. So, we're gonna wait and see what happens at the state level, we have, or we're scheduling another board meeting prior to the opening of school, and in absence of guidance from the state, the committee will reconvene and be ready to issue our own guidance. Some of the topics that we discussed during that meeting included vaccinations, was a survey underway of our own staff related to what'll be a mandatory testing program. Of the 117 responses we've received from staff members, 91% of them have reported being vaccinated so far, so that's a great start. We spoke about the guidance that's out there regarding face coverings, physical distancing, testing mechanisms that are in place, daily screenings, something that we anticipate going away, personal hygiene, contact tracing and quarantines. There are some differences between how quarantines were handled last year, how the CDC currently recommends handling them, and the unknown being if New York State will issue its own guidance. But certainly, that's something of concern to all parents, myself included. Facilities and transportation, remote instruction, athletics, extracurricular activities, and then again, our overarching focus on student achievement and instruction. So, that's a quick overview of what was discussed at that meeting, but everyone was in agreement that we're gonna wait and see what happens at the state level and reconvene if needed before issuing our own guidance. Is there someone from the PTA here? The new PTA? Okay. Oh, you are? All right, you want to come up and just introduce yourself? Just read the names? No? So we do have newly elected PTA board members, Amanda Chulo, Pat Kennedy, Adriana Ariza, and Lana Hamel, our president, vice president, treasurer, and secretary of the PTA. I would just ask to share their names. And that's it, thank you.
Okay, just as an aside, welcome, new PTA officers. The PTA is such an important part of the school, and we are so glad that we have parents who have volunteered to serve. Before we start on new business, are there any public comments on the agenda, on the listed agenda items? You don't have the agenda?
No.
Yes, at the end of the meeting, there's, we open it up for public comments on anything, but this is just on the agenda items that we're gonna cover right now.
Did you cover the list?
We are not gonna, that is not one of the agenda items. Okay, so, we're gonna start with new business, resolution one.
Resolving the recommendation of superintendent of schools to appoint Christina Giacominie to a probationary appointment as an officer student in the people personnel department on step one of the CSEA salary schedule effective July 27th, 2021. Ms. Giacominie, Giacominie, sorry, will immediately begin an unpaid leave of absence effective July 27th through August 22nd, 2021. She will begin her 52-week probationary period from August 23rd, 2021 through August 22nd, 2022.
Second. Comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number two.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Jessica Kearns to a probationary appointment as a school monitor effective September 2nd of 2021 with a probationary period of 52 weeks, September 1st, 2022 at the elementary school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Bobby Anne O'Flanagan to a probationary appointment as a school monitor effective September 2nd, 2021 with a probationary period of 52 weeks, September 1st, 2022 at the elementary school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Number four, please.
Resolving the recommendation superintendent of schools to appoint Carmela Romero to a probationary appointment as a school monitor effective September 2nd, 2021 with a probationary period of 52 weeks, September 1st, 2022 at the elementary school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Number five.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Jacqueline Medina to a probationary appointment as a school monitor effective September 2nd of 2021 with a probationary period of 52 weeks, September 1st of 2022 at the elementary school on step 1A of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The resolution passes. These school monitors and assistants are integral parts of our school, and we are so glad to welcome them. Number six.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Justin Jamison to a probationary appointment of groundskeeper custodial worker effective July 1st, 2021 with a probationary period of 52 weeks, August 31st, 2022 at the operations department on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Number seven.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Jeanette Ryan to a probationary appointment as a .75 FTE bus driver effective September 1st, 2021 with a probationary period of 52 weeks, August 31st, 2022 in the transportation department on step one pro-rated of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? This has got to be one of the most difficult jobs in the district, so we're, we welcome Jeanette. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number eight.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Harrison Deegan to a one-year leave replacement position as a social studies teacher for grades seven and eight at the middle school effective August 31st of 2021 through June 30th of 2022 or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education on step one BA of the Putnam Valley Federation of Teachers salary schedule. Mr. Deegan holds social studies 7 through 12 emergency COVID certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Number nine.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Caitlin McCarron to a long-term substitute position as a reading AIS teacher at the elementary school effective August 31st, 2021 through December 17th, 2021 or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education at the substitute salary rate of $150 per day. Ms. McCarron holds literacy B6 initial certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number 10, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Susan O'Connell, CPSC chairperson, a .2 FTE position for the 2021-2022 school year. This assignment is in addition to her full-time assignment as a school psychologist at the elementary school.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Number 11.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of elementary school assistant principal, Thomas Jicari, from the district effective the close of business on August 27th of 2021 as per document 36/22 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We want to thank Mr. Jicari for his service to the district and wish him the best of luck in his future endeavors. We're already underway filling the position, in fact, we've had over 100 applicants apply, and that process is underway to find a replacement for elementary school assistant principal.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number 11.
12?
12.
Oh, sorry, 12.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of school bus driver Roland Ramirez from the district effective the close of business on July 23rd, 2021 as per document number 31-22 attached to the agenda and official minutes of the meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number 13.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of teaching assistant Crystal Michaels from the district effective August 9th, 2021 as per document number 3722 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number 14.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of high school office assistant Kim McNeil from the district effective August 27th, 2021 as per document 40/22 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Resolution passes. Number 15.
It's long, get ready. Whereas, the participant pursuant to the provisions of the general municipal law and its investment policy after due investigation, evaluation, and deliberation has determined that it is in the best interest of the participant to invest a portion of its public funds on a cooperative basis pursuant to the terms of a municipal corporation agreement dated as of April 29th, 2016, the agreement among the Red Hook Central School District as lead agent and various other municipal corporations under the trade name New York Liquid Asset Fund, NYLAF. Now therefore, be it resolved by the governing body that the finance board of the participant located in Putnam County, State of New York as follows. Section 1, the terms, conditions, and provisions of the attachment attached heretofore hereby approved. The district treasurer, the chief financial officer of the participant is hereby authorized to execute and deliver the agreement, and the chief financial officer is hereby authorized to affix the seal of the participant thereto and attest such seal. The chief financial officer is hereby authorized to, from time to time, effect and consent to such changes to the agreement in the form attached heretofore may be necessary or convenient in order to further carry out the purposes of the agreement or to clarify or correct the terms thereof. The chief financial officer is hereby authorized to delegate the forego duties of his or her designate as authorized by the law as that term is defined in the agreement, which designate is an authorized employee officer of the participant. Upon the execution in full and delivery of the agreement, the participant shall become a participant at that term, as that term is defined in the agreement. Section 2, notwithstanding any term or provision of the agreement to the contrary, the participant may withdraw from the agreement at any time upon 30 days written notice to the governing board of NYLAF by the chief financial officer, and thereafter, the participant shall cease to have any rights or obligations under the agreement. Section 3, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its due adoption by the finance board.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Jill, would you like to translate this for us? Could you translate that for us? And for the audience? Sorry, can you translate number, this?
So this is just another, this is just another tool for us to be able to make investments with any of the, you know, the monies that we have in school district halls. Right now, we only have like our local bank, we use JP Morgan Chase, and we use New York Class. This is an approved liquid asset fund that many school districts throughout the state use. You know, there are a whole list of them, I don't have them with me, but it's just another approved way for us to invest money, that's all.
Last words, that's great, thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Number 16.
Resolving the recommendation of superintendent of schools to accept the bid proposal from TRIB Audio, the sole bidder, in response to bid number 2020-2107 AV installation and maintenance services as per document number 3922 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number 17.
Resolved to authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into an agreement with the vendor that will be awarded a contract for driver education services with an anticipated fall 2021 program start after the RFP process has concluded.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I'm glad to see this occurring.
Yeah. I know a lot of students are gonna be glad to see this back. In, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number 17.
18.
Oh, 18, sorry. Who's doing 18? You?
Is that me?
I think so.
Okay. Resolving the recommendation superintendent of schools that school taxes be extended against the taxable property of the towns of Putnam Valley, Carmel, and Cortland as appears on the tax list hereby are levied, and be it further resolved that this board executes warrants on August 19th, 2021 for each of the towns. For the town of Putnam Valley, to be effective September 1st, 2021, in the amount of $34,403.175 less star as per document number 4022 attached to the official minutes of this meeting on file in the district office. The town of Carmel, to be effective September 1st, 2021, in the amount of $122,296 less star as per document number 4222 attached to the official minutes of this meeting on file in the district office. And on the town of Cortland, to be effective September 1st, 2021, in the amount of $4,230,496 less star as per document number 4122 attached to the official minutes of this meeting on file in the district office. That these warrants be for the portion of the district lying in the towns of Putnam Valley, Carmel, and Cortland, and the collection period ends October 31st, 2021. That said warrants be delivered to the tax collector of Cortland and Putnam Valley, and be it further resolved that the collector may make no changes or alterations in the warrant or rules except as provided in the sections 551 through 558 of the real property tax law, and shall issue tax statements and make collections pursuant to the applicable provisions of the real property tax law.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. We are now going to begin the consent agenda. Number one.
Resolved to approve consent agenda items 2 through 25 as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Before questions or comments, I asked Mrs. Bellino to explain the items 2 through 25 in the consent agenda.
The consent agenda includes approval of the minutes from the July meeting, CSE/CPSC placements, the 21-22 substitute teacher and staff listing. We are approving staff members as substitutes for the next school year. We're approving enhanced longevity graduate course credits, in-service courses, hours credits for staff salary purposes. We're approving use of the district facilities by the Putnam County Emergency Management Services when required. We're approving staff members who participated in the 2021 summer boost program, the summer E&amp;L program. We amended the ESY 2021 staff member listing. We approved a homebound, we're approving a homebound instructor for the 2021 ESY program. We approved the staff that participating in the 2021 kinder camp. We're approving summer work for our CSE chairperson. We approved a summer clerical worker. We're approving additions to next year's clubs advisory and leadership roles. We're approving the fall 2021 coaching recommendations. There's a budget transfer included. We're accepting donations, a very generous donation from Hope for Youth Organization. They're providing $5,000 to the middle school to support the homework booster club, and we're also accepting products and equipments in excess of $9,000 from Indian Point Energy Center. We're approving additional hours for some staff members over the summer and for the upcoming school year. We're approving a settlement agreement. We're approving an unpaid leave of absence. We're also approving some unpaid days for staff members. We're appointing members of the 21-22 Policy Committee. We're appointing members of the 2021 Audit Committee, and we're approving agreements with KG, KGND architects for COVID-related projects. We're approving two vendors for investigative services that we will use when needed during the school year. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Questions or comments on any of those items? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The consent agenda is accepted. So, upcoming meetings, topics, and presentations. Dr. Luft?
So as Dr. Doherty had mentioned, we'll have a reading of our, the newly adopted sexual harassment policy at the next board meeting, and we'll have our external auditors here reporting at the September 22nd meeting.
Okay. Were we gonna see if we could get the Communities That Care Coalition to?
So I'm working with the CTC to have them come and share the survey results for their youth at-risk survey. We're just trying to finalize the date.
Yeah, I'm just, I only ask because I do think as students come back, I'd like to know how they did on the survey, and I'd like to have that sooner rather than later, so, but I know we have to work with the, you know, with their board to do the presentation, so I appreciate you looking into that. Okay. Now we're opening the meeting up for public comment on any topic. When you come to the microphone, would you introduce yourself? When you come to the microphone, would you introduce yourself so that we know who's speaking to us? Thank you.
Including name and town, correct?
Huh?
Including name and town.
Name and town, yeah.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Good evening, my name is Patty Villanova. I'm a longtime resident taxpayer. I'm a mother and a grandmother. My kids, my adult children, went to Putnam Valley schools. I just want to say tonight, I do feel like I'm in an operating room between the masks and there's everything else, but that's just the ambiance. Anyway, I have two issues I would like to speak on that are affecting, is affecting our district. Number one, I would like to say I am very disturbed by the inroads that critical race theory and also the transgender agenda seems to have made in our district in the past year or so. I know that, you know, I've been reading a lot of information that's been put out there by, by the parents, and it seems that, especially with critical race theory, it has a number of different names. I would suggest, as somebody that pays attention to these things, as a taxpayer advocate certainly, that before this district goes into teaching or having these very, you know, exotic curriculums, it seems to me that you're not really doing that well in the most basic things. And I'll give you an example. I looked at the school report card. For grade five in the English Language Arts, only thirty nine percent of the children are proficient. For grade seven, English Language Arts, also thirty nine percent proficiency. Grade eight was a little bit better, fifty two, but still, that's forty eight percent of grade eight that is not proficient in English, that's very basic, English Language Arts. In math, grade seven was only forty two, forty two percent proficient, and grade eight was only thirty one proficient. So, my suggestion would be, before you start, you know, trying to indoctrinate these students, you know, with basically Marxism and some kind of weird transgender ideology, I think that you should get back to basics. Children, now going forward with the masks, I'd like, I heard a little bit of, you know, your, what you're planning, children are not drivers of the transmission of COVID. And I do have documentation, which I will leave a copy with you when I'm done. They have a statistical risk of zero of dying from the virus. They actually have a much greater statistical risk of experiencing detrimental effects from masking. When comparing the risk of COVID to the risks associated with masking, the evidence is clear. There is no justification to force students to wear masks. Even before the COVID crisis, with all of its inhuman consequences for children, education was already in a crisis of its own. And I have seen firsthand with my grandchildren what has happened in the last year. I know of what I speak, and it is, it is an atrocity what is going on with these masks. While not true of all schools, and certainly not of all teachers, too many students have been exposed to ideology like critical race theory and transgender, transgender agenda rather than real knowledge. They are learning under the tyranny of mediocrity and are molded into followers who are to be part of a collectivist, anti-American machine. Under the guise of equity and diversity, excellence is considered to be a detriment to a child's development. Schools are becoming a kind of indoctrination center, spewing out sameness and mediocrity. Ideology in the age of COVID has reached a new level of absurdity with obsessive dictates that kids must wear masks in schools. Children are almost completely unaffected by COVID nineteen, but health experts, political officials, and education bureaucrats have long ago abandoned scientific data about the effects of COVID on children. Instead, we get a different daily scientific narrative that, where the school district seems to think that they have sovereignty to go against parents and make for them personal decisions about their children's lives. The masks have long to cease to be health aids, if they ever actually were. They've become symbols of authority. Study after study has shown that children are not vectors for COVID, and the masks don't work. Yet, the school, this school district and others are now demanding that our children and grandchildren must suffer the abuse of wearing a disgusting and germ-filled muzzle all day long without regard for their physical or mental health. And I have seen this. I have seen their lives being ruined. I have seen my grandchildren crying and begging not to have to wear a mask as, when I've taken care of them and had to get them ready for school. I do not want, childhood can be stolen in any number of ways. A child can be verbally or physically abused, or become part of a large collective disaster, political unrest, or war. We cannot deny the truth of the current situation. Forcing children to wear masks and indoctrinating them into a whole new way of life that changes their innocent dispositions into subjects afraid of the psychological and tyrannical system is abuse. The ultimate meaning of human relationships is found in face-to-face encounters. We gaze into each other's eyes. We react to others' smiles, laughter, frustrations, and recognize that indeed, we are human, even more than a grown adult. The face of a child represents beauty, truth, goodness, imagination, and creativity. Past, present, and future is contained in those curious eyes and unburdened minds. And yet, this board and others have no problem ignoring these truths and the science by insisting that there will be masks come hell or high water. COVID nineteen is, was a crisis. Let's not make it worse. We don't need masks. We don't need to do this to our children. Please, leave our kids alone. And again, as I'm speaking as a grandparent who has seen this firsthand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to address a couple of those topics before we go to the next speaker. As I've stated on numerous occasions, we are not teaching CRT, and we are not indoctrinating our students. So, I stand firm with that statement. You are right, we one hundred percent support our transgender students that are going through that transition, and we'll do anything we can to make them feel supported like we would any other student within our buildings. If you have information that refutes the information we receive from experts, I am more than willing to look at any information anyone has to share regarding mask mandates. I'm happy to take a look at what you handed in. And I would suggest that the parents of the two ten-year-olds in ICU in Orange County may feel differently about the effects of COVID on youth. Thank you. Go if you want.
My name is Miranda Zaki-Grits, and I am here to talk about the mask mandates. So, I am going to tell you that I have been living this pandemic inside of work since day one, and I'm not, do I think it should be a parent's choice? I do in a way, but I've seen children very, very sick from this. I've watched death worse over the last few weeks since July third was my first child I lost to COVID nineteen. One death is too much, and I don't mean my child. I am a trauma nurse in an emergency room, in two emergency rooms, and it is horrible when death is too much. And I know it's hitting the younger population. I've never intubated a fourteen-year-old until two weeks ago due to COVID. So, I understand how everybody feels about the mask mandates. I will tell you that I have heard children say, mommy, I have to put my mask on and not just my own. And I look at these children and I say, wow, they're smarter than the parents. We have to separate our political world from science, okay? There are pandemics that happen throughout our lives, the measles month, rubella, what else, tuberculosis, all of the Spanish flu. We are lucky enough to have these masks. No, they don't suffocate people. I've been wearing them for twenty-nine years, and N ninety-five under a surgical mask over the last year and a half. My pulse ox hasn't changed. My blood work hasn't changed. I test myself every single day I get home from work to make sure I'm not bringing anything home to my family and my children. The testing is not a big deal. Really, it's not. We need to stop making a big deal out of these mask mandates and separate your politics from this. That being said, I really want to hold you truth to CRT. I really hope that none of this comes into our children because my child is taught by the Declaration of Independence of America, and if you want me to recite it to you, I will, verbatim. If you have ten minutes, I will be happy to. All of these people have a right individuality. So does my child. And we hold these truths to be self-evident that all people are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain and evil rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and that to secure these rights, we, that to secure these rights. We hold these truths to be self-evident that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain and evil rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights. Governments are instituted among men, driving their just powers from the consent of the government, that whenever any form of it becomes destructive, we have the right to alter and to abolish them and to institute new government. That should be held in our schools everywhere and taught, not the CRT. My daughter has nothing to feel guilty about in her life. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Vicki Wilders. I am a lifelong resident of Putnam Valley. I have attended Putnam Valley schools myself, and my daughter's an incoming tenth grader. Let me introduce myself a little bit more. I am a white, privileged woman, but not in the way in which some of society sees me as privileged, or the way in which our students are being taught of privilege. I have been privileged to attend these fine schools. I have been privileged to have a supporting family always encouraging me in life and in my academics. I have been privileged with a strong work ethic, having served all members of this community for twenty-three years at our local hospital. I have been privileged to have strong, faith-based parents who at times worked multiple jobs to provide for our family. My mother worked at the elementary school for twenty-five years. I was a class mom while my daughter was in kindergarten to fourth grade, spending many hours in the classroom with our students and teachers. To say my heart is in this district is an understatement. I love our schools. I love this town, but I do not love the changes being made to the curriculum or the agenda at hand that is not part of the curriculum. So, my privilege in life is not due to the color of my skin, but from the solid core values I was taught at home and at these schools. I have had absolutely nothing handed to me, and I am not oppressed, nor am I an oppressor. It was the decision of my husband and I to raise our daughter in Putnam Valley, knowing she would grow up with the same opportunities I was privileged with as a child. We live in a small, modest home, pay these ridiculous taxes to give her a better life. I am confident that the majority of parents in this town and in this room do the same and have the same goals and dreams for their children. But now, I haven't been this scared to send my child to school since the days following the Parkland shooting. Why? Because you're not doing your job for which you were hired. I have a huge respect for educators. Almost all of my friends are teachers. What you have been handed these last years is unimaginable, and I am so grateful for what you have done during this disgusting pandemic. Yet, you want to add a political agenda on the shoulders of our children and disguise it as creating unity among our community. Except you can't put a mask on it and disguise it. We see what's happening. You can't sneak your agenda into suggested reading books. You can't sneak it into our yearbooks or into role-playing and discussions, discussions in the classroom. My daughter said to me recently, Mom, I, I don't understand. Everyone's the same to me. Yet, she gets on the bus, she comes here, and she's told differently. She's made to feel like she's done something wrong. You claim that the goal is unity in a diverse society. We'll remind you, I grew up here. It was always diverse. The only difference are your views and theories that are being internalized into the classroom when they should remain an external issue. Stick to the basics. Our American students are falling behind. You want to create unity? Encourage those students who choose to sit during the pledge, to stand with their hand on their heart. Why? Because it is this school and country that gives each student a laptop, each student the same courses to choose, each student opportunity regardless of their race. I cannot allow this. I cannot allow your discrimination, and now it's trickling down to achievements being awarded based on race rather than truly earned. Why? Heck, I might lose some friends after speaking here tonight. That saddens me as an adult. Can you imagine how a child will feel if they lose friends over discriminating discussions? They don't even know who they are yet. They are easily persuaded by peers and social media. You are taking advantage of your position. You are educators, not activists. Everyone deserves to be treated with respect. Everyone deserves to feel comfortable in their own skin, but everyone is not the same. Your DEI agenda is a form of socialism. It does not belong in our schools. There is no way that treating everyone the same will lead to academic growth. In fact, there will be less opportunity and competition, and potential lack of motivation by our students will be due to lesser rewards. Rewards are earned, not given. They are earned by utilizing all of the privileges this school offers to all of the students. If you go to a store, make a purchase, and are unsatisfied with what you bought, you can get a refund. Well, I can't get a refund, but I am still paying for something that I feel is defective, and in this case, destructive. Please, keep your theories and beliefs out of the classroom. Let me remind you of our, your mission. The Putnam Valley Central School District, in partnership with families and community, will ensure that all students are engaged in a challenging, student-focused educational program, understand and assume their responsibility for lifelong learning, work to achieve their personal best, and become productive citizens in a diverse global society. Thank you for your time this evening. I am hopeful for a happy, safe, and successful school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I do have a question.
You just got to come to the mic, sir.
Yes.
You got to follow the rules.
Okay. So, I didn't write anything, but I do have a question. I'm Nicole Posh, Osceola Lake Road. Last time I was here, you did say that CRT wasn't being implemented. And then, that week, I, my son came home from school, third grade, asked me if we were part of the KKK. And I asked him how, we've never talked about the KKK in my house. It's not something we've ever brought up, right, Michael? So, I asked him how he learned that. It was a blast fact book. I actually got the book myself. So, he, I'm not going to say the teacher's name, third grade, he was taught KKK was strictly white people against strictly black people. That's all it was. And I had to explain to him that, you know, it was more than that. It was, they were against Jews, they were against Catholics at one point, they were against immigrants, they were, you know, I had to give him a whole lesson. So, we're, you're saying we're not getting the CRT in school, right? Which, I wholeheartedly believed you that time. How is that not part of CRT? And also, Fourth of July, my nine-year-old asked me why it's Independence Day when Juneteenth is the real Independence Day. So, these are the things that the kids are actually learning that I'm just getting confused about, and also why a third grader is learning about KKK already. Because I know I didn't learn about it until probably about sixth grade, seventh grade. And white, oh, white power, my son asked me about as well, which really, that's something for my, I, we're, we're very, we don't talk about it in the house. And maybe we need to talk about it more, but we don't talk about white power. We don't talk about the KKK. We don't talk about black and white. We talk about people, and you treat people the way they treat you, and that's it. You know, nobody's better than you. We all bleed red. And my son, my nine-year-old, actually told me, why is there a difference? Because when you take our skin off, we're all bones. So, why are these kids at this young of an age, learning this when this wasn't even implemented yet? I don't understand. Honest question.
Well, I mean, I'm certainly not familiar with the book, and we could have a conversation as to age appropriateness and context in which that.
It's one of those blast fact books.
Right, I wrote it down.
Which is great. I want my.
Well, I mean, I'm certainly not familiar with the book, and we could have a conversation as to age appropriateness and context in which that-
It's one of those blast back books.
Right, I wrote it down.
Which is great. I want my son to learn about history, but I want him to learn about it the correct way.
Right, and I think that's, one, it has nothing to do with CRT, at least my definition of it.
Right.
Right, I'm not, we're not teaching white privilege or other things like that which are attached to CRT in 3rd grade, right? It's a conversation about a historically accurate event, one of the low points of our country. But I certainly, as a parent of a 3rd grader as well, may question the appropriateness of that content specifically around the context. Now, I wasn't in the classroom. I don't know what context was shared. I don't know what the teacher said to preface it, or to have conversations about the topic. But those are all things that I am certainly willing to-
But you just said you had a 3rd grader, right, also?
Yes.
How would, and I'm not being competitive by any means right now, how would you feel if your 3rd grader came home and used the word white power?
I would be curious to know in which context he learned about it.
By reading, well, I read the book. It didn't come from the book, the word white power, but they learned about white power in the time of when they read that book.
Right.
And watched, what was it, the Brain Pop? Brain Pop?
Brain Pop is a, yeah.
To the fact where now he thinks that 4th of July isn't even Independence Day anymore. Like, these are the little things that are going to be trickling down to our kids, which already have trickled down. I, I'm sorry, I just have a problem with my 3rd, my nine-year-old learning about KKK and white power. Where I would also be opposed to him learning about, you know, terrible things on the other side. It's not because I'm white, it's not because I'm privileged, it's because no kid should know about white power at nine years old. Nobody should know about, you know, KKK and only, he also told me only white people owned slaves, and there were only black slaves. There were Irish slaves, I had to teach them. Italians came here from Italy and we were, you know, dirt on the bottom of the feet. When they eaten, I, I, it hurt my soul that my son came home and asked me if we had anybody that was part of the KKK. And he learned that from Putnam Valley School District, where I, you know, rave about this school district of people, and it's almost embarrassing. Sorry. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Delina Gritz, and I'm a student in the middle school going into 7th grade. And I just want to touch on one subject. So sometimes in school, we learn about LGBTQ+ community, and we celebrate Pride Month and Black History Month, and sometimes, because I'm not part of the LGBTQ+ community, it's just my choice, and I'm not black, and sometimes I feel not left out, but like, not, not equal, if you know what I mean. And, you know, like the rainbow masks, they gave out, and it's just like, they're getting to celebrate themselves with the school, and I'm kind of not, if that makes sense. But, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At least certainly our attention is not for anyone to feel left out in these events, but I guess I would challenge anyone to put yourself in those child's shoes, and how they feel left out and marginalized every day, in every way, in, in society. And, right, they're singled out for a month and try to make sort of their feelings affirmed and known by all, but we're certainly not trying to indoctrinate others, just a way to recognize kids that are different than other kids, and that's really what they are.
Any other public comments?
I have two adult children that were in Putnam Valley schools, and I have a 13, almost 14-year-old son.
Sorry, just got to introduce yourself.
I'm sorry? Oh, sorry, Vicki Mazzola. And I have seen such a change in the school, and it bothers me. I have a gay child. I don't need to wear a sign because I have a gay child, okay? And my other two children are not. And my, my kids always felt accepted, and everybody should feel accepted. And this young girl is so right, what she just said, and I give you so much credit for coming up and saying that. But I'm tired of people, I've lived a life. My mother was gay, so I don't want to even, I know how it is, okay, to feel left out. And I grew up in the Bronx, it was very difficult. Michelle, and I know each other from when we were kids. So, I might, you know, that's all I have to say.
Does the board have anything they'd like to add, or any comments they'd like to make? Anything happening that we? Okay, so I'd like a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have just one more question. You said about the Gay Pride Month and the masks and everything, and, you know, I, I don't want to-
Sorry, Nicole, get it, come back, I got the mic.
So, sorry, Nicole Pousha, Osborna Lake Road. But you said about the Gay Pride and, you know, making everybody feel, okay, so, you know, Police Appreciation Month went by also, and there was no flags for police appreciation, no masks for that. There was an incident last year with the ACAB on a parking spot. I don't know what happened with the girl. I heard she got a slap on the wrist. What about those kids, though? Because what about those kids who are reading books about, you know, cops are bad, and let's burn cops, and let's kill cops? What about those kids whose parents are cops, that they're going to feel left out, and they're going to feel like something's wrong, and all cops are bastards, like I said, was spray painted on a parking spot? What about that kid? You know, what about, what about that? Why are we general, you know, putting kids into groups? You're gay, you're gay. I understand it's very hard and it's difficult, but why are we bringing, just generalizing right there? Why are we not representing all the kids? Because now these kids who have cop parents are gonna, so are we gonna get cop masks for them, or blue line masks, or any of that?
So, sorry, I didn't mean to, yeah?
I think I'm done.
Okay. So, I will be the first to shout from the top of the hills. I am a huge police supporter. I have a brother, family, attend police fundraisers. I respect the fact that 99.99% of police officers are noble, kind-hearted citizens who take an oath to put their lives at risk, to serve the community they serve. Every single day, you will not find anyone, I am not embarrassed to share what I believe about police officers. So I have no problem of honoring them in any way. We had multiple spots painted out there with thin blue lines. Those were not painted over, just like the, the incorrect statement was. But what you don't see is the 12-year-old crying in the guidance office every day because they don't belong. What you don't see-
You guys don't see is the child of a cop crying-
Okay, but what I'm telling you is, what happens in school? The child of the police officer is not talking to the psychologist because they're suicidal.
But they're going to be soon.
Okay, well, and then we need to, we need to lift them up too. But they're not now, and I'm trying to explain why we go out of our way to recognize some students. These students are struggling, right? They do not fit the norm in society.
Like, all kids are struggling right now, too.
I, yes, and I acknowledge that, and we do everything we can to support every single child, but not all kids are suicidal, not all kids are in the psychologist's office counseling. These kids need to be lifted up.
I get that, and I appreciate that.
They need support, they need to be recognized, they need to be feel, to feel-
I get that, and I appreciate that.
-as if they're all included. But I'm answering your question.
Yeah.
That's why we go out of our way. We don't require it. It's an option. Nobody's forced to wear any mask.
Right.
But it's sort of the one time a year where those kids feel valued and justified. If we want to have a conversation about doing something, about police recognition, I'm all ears. We could certainly come up with something to do that. We work extremely close with our police officers here, state troopers, the sheriff's department. If we want to come up with a way to show how much we support police, I'm all ears, I'm on board, I'm happy to do it.
I think-
But that doesn't take away from the social and emotional needs of students who have struggling with gender identity, and how they feel, and what we do as a school to support them.
Okay. I think in the future, though, that maybe something with cops should, because with everything that's going on right now, I know a lot of parents who have children, cop parents that have children, that are not doing too well right now, so maybe that is something you guys could put into. Okay, bye, I'm done.
Thank you.
Howard, London, Putnam Valley. Can you define woman for me? Can you define woman for me?
No, this isn't like a quiz show?
No, it's not, it's not. I agree with you, it's not. And any child who has suicidal tendencies or feelings, confusions, should absolutely get whatever help we can offer them as a community. They are special. All children, all children are special. They're beautiful. They have different qualities, but they're all our future, and we want to make sure that they're growing up in the safest and most nurtured way possible. But, gender identity questions confusion. Okay, I, I understand that exists, but again, I would ask you, if we're going to follow the science, as was said earlier, to define woman, to define girl, if, what, all right. I am a man and a father, and a husband and a father in this district. There is a, there is a meeting that I have with a teacher during school hours, or with the principal. Everybody knows who I am. I'm allowed to use the restroom, I assume. On that particular day, I self-identify as a woman. Am I allowed to use the female restroom, the girls restroom? I'm not asking you for an actual answer. I'm trying to make a point that introducing ideas to children who are not suffering from a mental condition which is described in the DSM, the DSM-5. It's not to say they're crazy, it's not to say these kids are abnormal, it's not to say that they're lunatics, or anything of the sort. They have an emotional and mental condition, and we need to treat them with respect and not lie to them. We need to help them in any way we can. However, you don't need to corrupt the minds of other children while trying to help children who are suffering from this illness. Illness in the sense that it's a mental disorder. Gender dysphoria is a mental disorder in the DSM-5. I didn't write the DSM-5. Talked to the American Medical Association. But if you can't even define woman, or man, or tell me that it's totally acceptable for me in the next 30 seconds to self-identify as a woman, then you have a problem. If you don't see that, that's an even bigger problem. Thanks.
Okay, I think we've, we've adjourned the meeting? Okay.
Do you have a vote?
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.